Are you ready?
Ready.
Call me north. Public comment?
Well, I've got one. I assume all of you have this two-page letter.
I passed them all out this morning.
So then, I hope you take it in heart. I'll add a few questions. My phone number's on the back. If you don't understand it, it's on there. The point is, if a person can vote on reimbursing the department that is boss, and another public job is charged with managing that conflict. Everybody knows it. I'm just hoping you guys will do the right thing. The right thing would be to individual with the conflict to volunteer to resign from the board. Or, you know, you guys take care of it. They don't need again until June, I believe. So, we've got a little bit of time. Thanks.
Any other public comment?
I don't have any. I get some comments. Wondered about a lot of things over the last several months. And I did that by saying, what if? What if Frank Voits was the general contractor at the airport? Helped in a runway project and made a lot of money. What if one of the owners of Frank Voits was Steve Blair, who had a partnership in an airplane with Jimmy Wells? What if Chris Patrick sold ready mixed concrete out of the airport? What if Jimmy Wells ran his business out of the airport? What if we submit Gil ran her business out of the airport? What if some of these people got together and said, you know, guys, that was such a sweet deal that crossed the runway that we ought to have another federal project. So, I'll tell you what, let's do it. Let's go apply for one. What if they decided that they didn't have enough in the way of facts to justify an expansion? So, they created some. What if they did that? What if Jimmy Wells said, yes, I'll write that application and it's full of lies? It's not true. What if they did that? What if a corporation has a sales force and they recognize that there's a cost associated with that? Ten percent? What if that's ten percent of eight hundred eighty thousand dollars or ten percent of a concrete sale? What if that's how it works? What if a number of people felt that they couldn't get the project to go through unless they had a little help on the county board level? What if they took that a little further and said, you know, guys, these are all lies. We're going to need some help. We've got some friends here that'll help us. Maybe what if that commission, sales commission, or whatever it turns out to be, gets spread around a little bit? What if that's really what happened? Let that happen at a time when Mr. Patrick decided that he wanted to become more involved in the airport. What if it was known as the Patrick and Wells Airport at that time? What if Mr. Patrick's ego was damaged because people wouldn't come to Mr. Patrick for aviation services like they had? What if Mr. Patrick wanted people to keep secrets like they did for the CDs and stuff like that? What if they wanted to get everybody to do something they would regret and then maybe blackmail them and say, gosh, you know, this is a secret. If it gets out, we're all going to go to jail or be embarrassed, so we'll all keep it secret. What if that came about that way? And what if it did that way? Would the people then keep quiet for an entire year while the Boeck family stood before them and said, hey, this is going on at the airport? What if the reason you folks didn't do anything was because Jimmy was supporting a lie on those documents? What if people were going to benefit from those lies? And what if DOA, which is Division of Aeronautics, hadn't approved that grant application until late last year? What if after that was approved, there was a meeting on the airport committee to investigate the charges against Mr. Wells? And what if they received his resignation at that time? What if coincidentally in that meeting, which is a committee meeting, it was improperly posted and two county board members showed up, Mr. Genes and Mr. Helsley? Why were they there? Why did they participate? Public access says counselors investigating that. They've already asked this county board for their recordings, so they're closed session. What if everybody thought the coast was clear now that the federal grant has been approved? Jimmy's resigned and things are going well. What if that were the case? Well, what if that's true? What if I've made some complaints to people? I've been assured the FAA is going to investigate. What if the public, when the federal prosecutor comes to Edgar County to talk to Mr. Wells, wonders why it hasn't been reported? That's the what-if story I got for you guys today. Looking forward to the future. Like I said on my last visit, the wheels of justice turn slowly, but they are moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Item three, our presentation by Steve Oder on digital communications. You cut forward. Steve Oder, Digital Communications, and also Midwest Communication Group now. And what we've done is review your phone system that we put in back in nineteen eighty-six, nineteen ninety-eight, excuse me, about sixteen years ago, back when Carl was sheriff. It's been manufacturer discontinued, manufacturer support's discontinued, and there is a little bit of a rebate that we can get now that expires June thirtieth. We currently use analog phone lines from Frontier, which was back in GTE when I was putting it in. Existing configuration of the phone system for the courthouse and the sheriff's office and the annex. The system is located in the sheriff's office, connected by underground copper wires to the courthouse and then onto the annex. We buried cables back there, unfortunately put in conduits, and so they've also got fiber there now. The jail has a backup, battery backup and generator, which helps. Courthouse annex shares six direct inward coming lines for the ability to have, to call straight to any particular phone in the courthouse, sheriffs or annex. And the sheriffs in the nine-one-one have separate phone lines. Currently, we have about seventy-four phones in use. That's subject to audit. That's according to our printout. That doesn't mean there's a phone there because people could unplug phone and never got unprogrammed. So, we need to do a walking survey to actually finalize the count. I'm assuming it's a few less phones than that over the years. That's a long way to find out, and that's the walk-in thing. We're proposing to replace this in phase one. Page four, excuse me, I talk fast. We're proposing to convert the phone lines to ISDN-TRI, which is a digital circuit. It comes on a T1 with twenty-three circuits and a hundred DID numbers, and we would add some DID numbers for the future phases. It would cost about five eighty-five a month, but you'd get free local calls and about four thousand minutes of long distance, which pretty much takes care of your long-distance charges because you don't have anywhere near that much, as far as I could see. Which would replace your existing analog DID of six outgoing trunks. So, we would add six seventy-five a month, remove forty-seven. Page five, seventy-four phones. We would put in three control boxes, and I should point at this point, there are two or maybe three different ways of doing this. The existing way we have now, we could do that. It would be about a thousand or so less, just to use the copper wires. We do have the ability now to use that fiber that you've got and at least mitigate, to some extent, lightning damage. You got hit once, that I can recall, over the last fourteen years by lightning and didn't have a severe hit. Only had a few circuits to replace, so it wasn't a major hit, but any lightning storm comes through and that's not good. If we use fiber and just put in smaller boxes in each building, then we would only have fiber underground between buildings and it would help protect us a little bit. Price of thirty-three, six eighty-four includes a five-year hardware warranty and three-year software updates. Nowadays, the software updates are important to keep these things up to date. In the old days, we put a system in and that's what you had, and that's what you had. So, fortunately, we've had the one we've got for fourteen years, but we're getting to be on borrowed time now. One option would be to add an eight-party conference bridge, and that's primarily, we've done this in other places, and the people who would even think about this would be law enforcement because they could have people get on the phone all at one time and all be talking with different agencies on the phone. So, that's an option, but it's not a cheap one, so I left it out. Voicemail, currently don't have voicemail. We would add an eight-port voicemail to take messages. We set up department mailboxes, so if you call a department after hours, it plays a greeting, thank you for calling the recorder's office. Our office hours are eight a.m. to whatever, and you can either take a message or not take a message at that point. Phase two would be to add the other buildings, and primarily this building, the highway department and the health department. You have data circuits out here, you have DSL lines. We can use your existing routers. I talked to, oh, there's as many, Aaron.
Aaron.
Yeah. And he said you had the routers you had could be programmed to do that, and we would phase those in after the first two parts were done. They can set up a VPN tunnel, it's called, and then they could connect to the courthouse system and primarily advantages to saving money because they could use the circuit that we're putting in for the proposal for the courthouse. Benefits of networking, you can share the voicemail system. They can each add direct individual dial numbers so that you could dial direct to any phone in any of the buildings. And you'd have ability to transfer calls to and from the courthouse system. They could also forward calls up to your cell phone. They'd have caller ID on all the phones and three-digit dialing inside the network. Phase two would be the health department because that has the best payback. We replaced nineteen digital phones. They have an old Nortel system. Nortel went bankrupt about four or five years ago, so there was absolutely no, nothing being done with that product, a matter of just keeping finding parts. We propose two analog ports for fax. We'd have to keep, I'm proposing either two or three analog lines. They do have an alarm dialer there. We have to leave a dedicated line for connect to the courthouse. Purchase price for that one would be nine thousand sixty-nine or about a hundred and eighty dollars a month.
Is that more than what we're currently paying? Or, how does that, I'm not reading that correctly. I mean, what are we paying? I mean, in other words, for phone system out there, we're paying Frontier X amount.
Right.
This would be over and above?
We would be replacing costs, and that's the good news at the back end.
I'll let you get that. Sorry.
No problem. It was a good question. The highway department, they have thirteen phones, five lines. Because they're so far out from town, I'm suggesting you keep the lines there for at least a while to make sure your DSL circuits, as part of the way you get from town, the more chances they have of having problems. I asked and they said, well, the DSL line circuit's fine. What happens if you're working on the internet or something? If there's a few seconds glitch when it stops and then starts again? Now, data, you usually don't even notice it. But on phone call, you lose two or three seconds, and what happens? Like a cell phone that's dropping calls when you're out somewhere where the range isn't good. Again, seven seventy-two a month per, purchase cash, a hundred fifty-four a month per sixty months. And there's the expense summary. Got a total cost of about fifty grand. Or, we'll finance it for a thousand a month. And page twelve, the good news. We went through your phone bills in detail. We estimate savings of about one thousand three hundred and fifty-one bucks a month. Sixteen thousand two hundred a year, eighty-one thousand over the next five years.
What you're saying is this will pay for itself?
Yes. Move the boat. Low kicker, after the first five years, you're going to be really happy.
What type of timeframe to catch these rebates you were talking about?
That's June thirtieth.
We have another office that you've not included and we have not done anything with, and that's the Crekman Building up north of Tampa, the old law offices. It has fiber optics right to it.
Oh, okay.
We had that dropped in when they put it on through. So, we'd be interested to know what, I mean, just to look, gentlemen, I mean, what, how...
That won't be any savings because there's nothing there now.
Right, I understand. But, I mean, we don't want to miss the boat by, if we could have done it now and done a few things. We do need a line up there at least.
There's not a phone line in there now?
No. There's nothing that's operational in there now. But if, since we've got a little bit of savings, there's times when we could have used a phone up there, and if it's in the future used as much or a little bit more, it would be, I think, well, worth having a phone line up there.
Who knows when we're going to start shipping things up?
Right, and that's exactly where I'm at because we may be discussing those things fairly soon.
While we're on this subject, I've been, for years, seeing this Manitron expense. When we're doing, and I may be talking apples and oranges here because I don't quite understand it, you probably have a better idea. Can we somehow reduce that by upgrading to digital phones?
Okay, Manitron is the services we pay for the tax bills and et cetera.
And then the sheriff's, oh, what do you call it? It's a, for the lead stuff, it's not Manitron anymore. It used to be, but it's also the...
Nine oh one?
No, it's not Wells Fargo. It's a...
The phone still leads, I'm sorry.
I can't remember what the name of that company is.
The simple answer to the first part is that Manitron is something separate from the phone system.
It's a computer system.
Yes.
Okay, so we can't, okay, that's what I'm trying to, I was thinking it was a communication system.
And we are constantly looking. We were able to shave that bill significantly here about two years ago.
Okay.
But no, that is apples to oranges. Now, the lead system or whatever it is now, that may be something that we need to look at.
What is it we pay? Who do we pay for that? You know who I'm talking about?
I do too, but I...
I'm wanting to make sure that this system, if we consider it would be compatible, would be going around that and us getting a, just a thought.
Yeah, I don't know whether it's over the phone line.
None either.
Well, a T1 line would be a lot cheaper than having it on a top. I mean, as you go digital, you start getting a better deal. I'm just thinking.
Do you want the committees, some committee to look at this and see whether we need to get some...
The finance committee and the building committee, I guess, both should. Finance committee should come up with a proposal.
Right.
Next to the last, next to the last page is my worksheet. I can show the, can see the areas that we're suggesting savings. Some of it's just billing changes, some things should be just shut off that we're wasting money on. Fund out the health department, spending more money than the courthouse because they've got way too many lines in there. I don't, that's been that way for, I don't know how long.
But Janet will love to save some money here.
I've been over talking to her, and I said, you know, you're really going to save some money here if we get this? And here's a copy of those. This is the phones we're going to recommend for putting everywhere, and I did include two larger phones that have more buttons for the jail because, for the dispatchers because it would be easier just to press a button to do something rather than dialing codes.
You're not going to have automated answering. Where are you?
Not if I have a say to it.
Great.
I sell the things, but I'd rather, now, after hours, fine.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, but during the day, no. Now, if you go to lunch and you want to let them do that, I mean, and I'd rather have you guys tell us that, that, than go around because sometimes county, or I've been through the county courthouses, I think we've done a similar rate of them over the years. But some departments, no, I want an answer all the time. All right, so if someone says, told us that that's not going to happen, we can make sure it doesn't happen that way.
Augie, can you fill Steve in on the Crekman Building sometime, and then we'll set up a, we need to have a finance committee meeting. If building commit, everybody's invited anyway, but we'll set up a meeting fairly shortly so that we can make a recommendation by the June meeting, which I assume is soon enough.
Another option, if it's just one phone, this is a, this is a digital phone. We also have them as IP phones, and if you can just send an IP phone up there if you can get the fiber. But you've got some networking expense that I'm assuming would be taken care of by your networking guy.
That's what we need to get together.
Get together, yeah. And that way, you wouldn't have to pay any monthly fee at all up there.
I tried to get the network guy here today, but he had a final this morning on GIS. He wasn't even too tense, gentlemen.
Okay.
So, we're on work now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item... What's the address on that building where I'm buying for?
Nine oh eight North Main.
Okay. And we'd like to walk the courthouse and the sheriff's office this morning just to see because it's been used. See what's really there. If that's all right.
If the sheriff will let you in, you're more than welcome.
Okay. Yeah, we don't want to break in.
Can you guys call the jail and see if that'd be, or let them know that they're going to stop by? Digital Communications, they're the ones that have the phone system in the jail and the courthouse and everything.
Thank you, guys.
And maybe they can run them out, or maybe Mr. Wilson can run them out to the Crekman Building and show them inside there too.
Just go to Sheriff, talk to him first. We'll work it out that way.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, discuss ambulance bids open on May fifth, twenty fourteen. Dale? Start that off.
Well, we received three bids.
I had to do part.
He didn't send it to me. I've got copies of all the bids right here.
I thought I did send that out, but I guess I didn't.
Well, I thought these guys had a copy of it. I'll record it right now and set up with something.
I listened to you there.
First one, that's Rescue One from Chrisman. Current providers, Sabre County Special Service, and Care Ambulance from Sheriff Hope. The bid proposal was pretty specific. It required a one-year license and online. Care did not meet that requirement.
They were licensed, but it wasn't for a year?
Not for a year, no. The Chrisman one, they'd been licensed, but they weren't very clear about having a facility within two and a half miles of the courthouse, which is another specific requirement of the bid proposal. Current provider meets all requirements of the bid proposal. We should, I'll, my could have some, I think we're looking at this, but I thought you had them.
Well, is this kind of a moot point because isn't, isn't, I'll just put it right out on the table. I understood, I've understood from talking to some of the board members, that there was a specific amount of time that we had to make a decision and it automatically went back to the current provider. Is that correct? And are we, are we past that point?
Yes. Again, it was before my time, but I don't have the notes with me. I think you guys gave me a couple of minutes, but there was a meeting about February or March of two thousand thirteen where you revisited the current contract. And you guys are going to have to help me. It was for employee benefits.
It was in June. And February is when we took the building over out of the county's hands because there was the note that was due.
All right.
This was twenty thirteen?
Twenty thirteen. We took the building over in February because we had to jump through all the hoops at the beginning of the year because the building was coming due. And then we made a change. Mark Isaf looked at it and went through and made some changes to the language in the modified service agreement. And the big part of it was, there was some wording that needed to be added that made it eligible for the employees to be, could get reimbursed for, if they had a line of duty death, they could get the federal death benefit. That language was not in the contract.
Do you want a copy of that? I've got a copy of that here.
No. But anyhow, in the modified service agreement that Mark put together and Mark drafted was passed at the June meeting of twenty thirteen. And that's where Chris, Chris Patrick was still the board chairman at that time, and Dale wasn't on the board when all that went through. And none of the language changed other than that to add apart for the federal death benefit for the employees. Everything else was, Mark made some changes to some verbiage that he said needed to be cleaned up, but it was based off the original contract that was signed in oh-nine.
May of oh-nine.
Were you given a thirty-day notice?
The first paragraph says, "Let this agreement be for a term of five years commencing on June first, two thousand nine, ended on May thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, with each side having the right to give the other side thirty-day written notice of intent to renegotiate the agreement. If no thirty-day written notice is given prior to the expiration of the term, then this agreement shall automatically renew for a new five-year term. If this service agreement shall automatically renew, it shall renew under the same terms and conditions as set forth herein."
So, was anybody given a thirty-day notice?
You would have assumed, and that's where we're in trouble, that since you helped negotiate the bid terms, you would have known that we were going to bid this, right?
I did not negotiate the bid terms. I was asked what information we provide you apparently.
No, I thought, well, Dale, I thought you said he helped you.
I gave Dale all the information of what current services were provided right now.
Yeah, I asked him to give me what exactly he did now so we would have the same quality of service.
Yes. I was saying, I was saying, you would have known, this says we have to, it has to be written, written. I understand that. But you really knew, you really knew when you got the bid sheet that you knew that we were bidding it out, correct?
That's a play on words, isn't it?
What do you mean?
Well, you're saying he knew, but there was no written...
I agree with you. I agree with you.
So, no written notice, so...
I understand that.
As Mike says, it's a new term.
I'm just asking. I'm not trying to make it, I'm just asking. If there's anything, if he, do we have a contract with him that extends another five years at this present time or not?
Well, if we do, then we don't need to be discussing any of these others.
The other two bids didn't meet the requirements.
We don't know that. They were never given to the state's attorney, and he hasn't given us an opinion on them, all right?
They were given to the state's attorney.
And he hasn't given us opinion on them, yes.
I have a question of the state's attorney. Is by the simple legal notice of intent to bid, the supplying of all the current contractor, does it constitute that provision of the, of the...
Thirty days.
Or the written notice for thirty days?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
I asked that question, and I got a rather long answer, which was hard for the course. What was the answer?
Imagine that.
Sure answer is no.
Okay, that's fine.
And all I'm saying, I'm not trying to pass the buck. I was not here in June of two thousand thirteen, but everybody was aware that the thirty-day clause was in here. I will take the blame for not reminding someone. It's not real clear who gives the written notice. I don't know if it's the board chairman, or it's the state's attorney, or who it is that is supposed to do it. So, I'm not trying to point fingers at anybody, but...
I would have thought this, the ambulance committee.
It should have been given.
Well, the ambulance committee cannot, without the, without the express approval of the board.
That is, yeah, that is right. And I would have thought, when you guys read this contract, the first paragraph I would tell you that would have made you aware, like some people in the community were aware of, that we had a deadline. And you never made the board aware of that.
I think it's the one, I mean, the...
Alan, you'll need to look at the new one, the one that was modified. And it's in the first contract of the modified one also.
Yes.
Do we have that anywhere?
Yes. That's the June two thousand thirteen, I was referring to. Which was signed by Alan and Mike. Blame this dude.
Yeah, Alan, way to go. Yeah, Alan, way to go. I signed something, I don't think. You're the one with the vacation, yeah, that's good, okay, yeah, sounds good.
Now you remember?
No, I don't. This is modified certified.
Yeah, but turn the page, your name.
Was this something off of our board? This was through a board?
Yes.
Okay, through board.
That was a June board meeting, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I got this one. Yes, 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 yes.
I don't know, we're still discussing.
Mr. Chairman?
We had this, this was, we moved this at a board meeting through this.
Yes.
Yeah, this was like, yeah. I thought you were trying to tell me I just signed off on something.
No, anything that we, that's officially asked to be done in board.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I suggest that Wednesday morning, that once we get going on this thing, that rather than having the state's attorney come in at the end of the meeting, since we may have some legal issues that might cause a problem, that we have the state's attorney prepared to give us a more exact explanation of where we stand on this, before we vote on this issue, so that we might have an exact session early on in the meeting and do it then. That's just my suggestion.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Kid, Kim.
Is, I guess my question, is it on the agenda?
Yes.
To approve it?
Yes. So we need to do that beforehand? Well, it's.
To award the contract, it's on the county board agenda?
I have it right in my hand.
I think it is.
Is it all good?
Report on ambulance service bids open May fifth, there's a report.
So there isn't, it isn't a line item to approve or disapprove then?
That's correct.
So we will have to have a special meeting at some point in time, so that wouldn't necessarily reflect my recommendation. I, we could always do that anytime and just table that to a special meeting, because we can't approve it or disapprove it or anything else, right?
Well, the state's attorney may decide, if I'm correct here, that it's already approved and there's no reason to vote.
That's absolute fact. In absence of Kim and his legal guidance.
Okay, we'll get, we will attempt to have the state's attorney give us an illegal dissertation before we make a decision.
Mr. Chairman, who's gonna ask the?
We're gonna have the county clerk do that.
Okay.
Committee reports.
He's got all the information for the modified contract or agreement.
Alan, would you like to go first on this?
I don't have anything.
In your stead, the chairman and I both went to the region meeting for the. Basically, it has mainly to do with, we met with the building commission.
Right.
Uh, they opened bids for the new roof. And basically, they awarded a bid for a metal roof of eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars. That could cost us up to twenty-four hundred dollars, twenty-four hundred and eight dollars. It may be as little as twenty-two hundred dollars and some odd change. I've got a packet here to go over with you about the future, uh, what do they call that? They want to rearrange the contract, amend the contract to allow for future payments by each county, so that when these issues come up, that we don't all have to pony up large amounts of money. In other words, if we each paid a couple hundred dollars a year over a set period of time, then the maintenance wouldn't be such a big issue when we were coming up with big projects.
I explained for everybody, because I voted for that, and the reason after they explained, well, two reasons. One, I thought, what would Alan Zuber do?
He'd make a motion to go ahead and, no.
And the second, they explained this building committee, Coles County Building Committee, their sole purpose is managing that building, or managing the money. They was, uh, made it into effect to get low interest money to be able to build that building. And their sole purpose is paying off that building. And when that building's paid off, that building really belongs to all the different counties and can be sold, or assuming a disband. And, but any money that they have extra, when this building's paid off in that fund, would be dispersed among the counties proportional to what they're paying now. Is that what you got?
And our share is twenty, twelve point eight eight percent. So if the buildings, or if there's ten thousand dollars left, it's twelve hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Where should you guys go? No, and not, one of my original things was on that, that's why I brought up a few months ago, was the idea of like, as I looked at that and I looked at the costs, and I know sometimes you have costs of having loans and operating loans, and it looked to me, uh, like there may have been an additional amount already being paid on a monthly basis for that express purpose. And that was the only question that I had for them, because if we were already paying, uh, if, you know, the counties in general, the whole regional office, if they were already paying an extra hundred, twelve dollars a month.
Regional superintendent said they only budgeted a thousand dollars for maintenance. And we questioned that, for a building that size, they probably needed to have more than that for just general maintenance. But out of their budget, is that not what?
Then who, who all's in there? This whole stuff in county, right? Coles, Cumberland. But I mean, who, who all's physically in the building? What's, what do they do with the regional office?
That's it.
It's like, that's them, that's all that's in there, that's what that building is set up for. Okay, so you're not leasing it out to other? They aren't at this time, at one time they had a part of what was called the service center, and I'm not sure of their arrangement with them, that was also part, a quasi-part of a state. So it's Bobby Manley and her, her staff is all? That's my understanding. Okay.
But we're ready then, are you feeling sure?
No, no, that's, I just, because that was my initial thing was one, is then Dale brought up, do we already have insurance? Are they paying insurance for possible replacement of a roof? And then two, uh, just, you know, if that was gonna be explained, that we already had, uh, because there were some questions when I talked to prior regional superintendents and also prior board members, whether or not they had already allowed for that, some additional money being in there. And just because the Coles County Building Commission, you know, had come out and said, well, we think you guys as a county board ought to just adopt this thing that automatically says we're gonna redo our contract. Before I want to be a part of that, I want to be talked about. Because I had a little concern that we'd automatically do something just to alleviate a concern that Coles County Building Commission. Right.
For example, they had a proposal with a bunch of items on it, we subtracted off the roof, and it'd be like three hundred and fifty-six bucks a year for our share. And then total, that'd come up with about three thousand that would go into a fund every year. And then as things came up.
Is the state a partner in this deal?
Well, only insofar as they fund certain programs at the Office of Education.
So they don't, they don't own a piece of that building?
No.
Not the way it was explained to us.
That's my understanding, the seven counties are the ones collected late, whatever gets paid off in eight years. Because that was the other issue. If it truly goes back to those counties in seven or eight years, then you've, you've paid for something that, that's yours. So you're gonna have certain building maintenance that you're gonna have regardless, so. Thanks guys, appreciate it.
Carl?
Uh, the only thing I've got right now is the airport manager applications were due Friday, and I haven't, Augie just handed them to me, I haven't had a chance to look at them, but sometime in the near future, well, the committee will get together and review those and proceed with that.
Nathan?
Set in executive session, we'll talk about it.
Dale?
New?
Animal shelter meeting at twelve today, Mike and Alan. And I know a very particular article in the paper about the, uh, couple came over and picked up a dog.
Well, it's on the front page, yeah.
On the front page.
All the airplanes.
Yeah, that was good.
You wasn't in that picture.
They in Haslam.
We'll get that straightened out.
That's at Crackman? Crackman, is that it?
Yes.
Several items, uh, the Joe Doherty will be at our meeting on Wednesday to go over the audit and give us administrative letter. You all should've received the.
What, is, is, is that about the ambulance issue?
No, that's a separate field, that's a different.
Okay, okay.
However, I'm, I'm gonna go into that just a hair. Okay, you all should've received a hard, or a electronic copy, except for Carl, of that audit. And Carl received a hard copy. So he will be there and he'll be first on the agenda. He is, however, going to look at and talk to Larry about that issue. I emailed him the response letter from the other firm. And Larry worked for both firms, so they're gonna try to straighten some things out. In other words, who asked, why was it in there, and so forth. I mean, there's some logical things, steps that you can go conclude that, since his answer was, I'm not sure, then you could also ask, if you're not sure, why was it in the audit? Okay, so, at any rate, we're, we're exploring that rapidly. We already talked about the regional office. Linda from the assessor's office is retiring. Uh, Dina is gonna be taking, going full-time. Bev has informally let me know that she plans to give her notice effective December thirty first. Uh, I talked to Dina and she is somewhat aware of that. She would obviously like to throw her hat in the ring for the supervisor of assessment. She has one, she's held off taking a test, because they're only good for two years. And obviously, you know, she doesn't want to take it until she needs to. But she and Wanda are thinking about taking that test, so I just tried to, I've asked Bev to make sure that she gets us a notice as soon as she feels comfortable, so that we can move forward. The way time passes anymore, we're already half a year shot, so we need to deal with that. We probably, and we're gonna be discussing, a special meeting will probably be required, not only probably, maybe for the ambulance, but we'll be recommending the airport, uh, airport committee needs to have a special meeting to deal with the following issue. Resolution on advisory committee, appoint members of the advisory committee, bid for farm ground and approve, hopefully, the airport lease, which I just can generally tell you that we're close. Uh, we have some information to give you. We're hoping that we can move forward, so that we can at least initial an agreement this week. That's Jim's and my hope in the committees, so that we can move forward with that. And, uh, as far as the budget, we're in line. We're still under budget, basically for the year, we're at thirty-nine point two-five percent. Expenditures versus fifty percent. And that's adding in extra payroll and so forth, so that account accommodates the payrolls. It also, uh, we'd be at forty-three percent if we had a large payout, which we expect to make. So, just to give you some idea where we're, where we're at on that situation. Let's see. Make sure I haven't forgot anything else. Oh, yes, very important one, well, semi-important, some of you will think it's important, some of you won't. We do have to make a decision on McGuire's bills. We have two of them, to make a decision. The state's attorney has had both of them, and he has no problem, I mean, he's not telling us to approve them. But as far as he, he is concerned, McGuire has addressed the issues that you asked him to, uh, find out. So we have two bills, the original one for thirty-four eighty-six twenty-two, and a new one for seven hundred and five dollars. So, obviously, they are not on the bills, okay? They're a separate item for us to deal with, and we need to, Mr. Chairman, somehow deal with this matter one way or the other, okay? That's all I have, unless you have some questions.
One of them bills was took out of our bills last time, wasn't it?
Yes, well, no, never appeared in the bills, I just brought it up. No, I did not put it in the bills, because I didn't want anybody thinking I was trying to slip one through.
Slap issues.
Slap issues, uh, we are waiting for a response from the state's attorney. Thank you, I have that on the man's side, I missed it. He is, it's in his court, okay?
We're not under any, we're not under any deadline or anything like that, are we? I mean, that's a nine-one-one. It's a holder-upper of the night, yeah.
That's a bigger issue than that, but it's.
Okay.
County clerk?
Now that you had a chance to open up your word packets and pull out the agenda, does anybody have any questions on the agenda for me?
Alright, I'll look at it.
Open it up, well, it's, it's all nice and neat and put away.
I know, and you do a good job, I've never, ever, ever questioned your ability, thank you, thank you.
You're the only one.
Unlike some. As far as you know.
Any questions of the county clerk?
When's Andy's, uh, liquor license come, will they come up this effort?
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry.
Here for, here for, both the winery license come up November thirtieth every year, but the special event liquor license for Castle Fin is always May thirty first.
Okay, I just wanna make sure Andy didn't get left out.
Yeah, no, no.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move forward to closed session, discuss appointment. Appointments, well, really, we don't have any appointments. Employment compensation, discipline, performance, dismissals, we don't have any dismissals. Pending litigation and setting the sale price or lease, we don't have any of that either. So it would just be compensation, discipline, performance, uh, and pending litigation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Is there any action that we can take in evidence? Oh, there can't be anywhere.